Now I call the Liberty County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. The evening, everyone.
Good evening.
See, everyone, thank you for attending either live or through livestream. The Liberty County Board of Commissioners, this is our regular month meeting. We have two meetings, one first Tuesday at six and the third Thursday at five. So this is more so we call our regular monthly meeting. So thank you for viewing in or attending this meeting. At this time, Mr. Brown, has the meeting been properly advertised?
Yes, sir.
Yes, I don't see him here today, but I guess he's on the way. All right. If you will, please stand for prayer and pledge allegiance. Pastor Richard Hayes is going to lead us. Get that up.
Good evening, Commissioners and all in attendance and our Chairman Lovett. If we would, please bow your heads with me. Most gracious in the heavenly Father, we are thankful on today for so many wonderful things and many blessings that you bestowed upon this community. And even on tonight, we ask that you would continue to guide and lead these Commissars as they go forth in doing the work of bettering this place for the citizens that are here now and those that will come in the future, even in this election season, allow there to be clarity in those that are brought into positions to help make sure and ensure that the best of the community is brought to the forefront. We give you thanks and honor and ask that you continue to guide the decisions that take place on today. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Thank you all. Our agenda first calls for proclamation for GIS Day. Has Clint Stanley's name by there?
Good afternoon, everybody. I'm here today, I'm just going to introduce Mr. Jared Pritchett, who's our new, the county's new GIS analyst, and Jay Johnson, who's the GIS mapping technician for the Liberty County Assessors Office. They're going to tell you a little bit about GIS Day and what it's all about and ask you to approve a proclamation for them.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners.
Good evening.
GIS is the technology that best understands where. GIS can capture, display, analyze, location data to help make powerful decision. It helps us understand where is best to build a new park, predict areas of flooding, or plan the most efficient bus route. GIS Day is a worldwide event that celebrates the technology of geographic information systems. The first ever GIS Day was held on November 19th, 1999 during Geographic Awareness Week from November 14th through the 20th of that same year. GIS Day has been celebrated in Liberty County for many years, whether it be virtual or in person. GIS Day is when you remember how powerful the idea of where truly is. That is why we request that you proclaim November 16th as GIS Day 2020 in Liberty County.
Thank you, sir. You leave it up to him.
Good evening. I don't have any prepared remarks, but again, I appreciate the Board, the Board of Commissioners' continued support of GIS here in Liberty County, year after year. This year, we're getting back to a in-person GIS Day, so we're excited for that. And we've got a lot of participation from different county departments coming to showcase what they use GIS for on their day-to-day operations. And I hope that you can all come out sometime during that day between 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. and to see what we've got going on. So appreciate it. Thank you.
That's on the 16th?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, is it Jared? He's one of our newly hired employees. I met him a couple of days ago when I went over to their department.
Did you?
Yes, sir. So I said, "Welcome aboard."
He's already up front presenting.
I know. Fresh out of college.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir.
Chairman, I met him about a month ago.
Yes, sir.
Went over to ask for a map and he said that'd be $25.
Yes, sir.
Hey, and one thing about him, he had a serious look on his face. But we got that straightened out.
Yes, sir, we did.
Did he pay? If he didn't, you ain't got it straightened out.
He's done good. Brown?
This is proclamation for National Geographic Information System Day. Whereas a geographic information system, GIS, integrates hardware, software, and data for capturing, managing, analyzing, and displaying all forms of geographically referenced information. And whereas GIS is an important part of geography awareness, allowing us to view, understand, question, interpret, and visualize data in many ways that reveal relationships, patterns, and trends in the form of maps, globes, reports, and charts. And whereas National Geographic Information System, GIS Day, is November 16th, 2022. And whereas Geography Awareness Week promotes geographic literacy in schools. And whereas Liberty County is committed to expanding GIS to the schools and general public in order to showcase real-world applications with GIS that helps answer questions and solve problems by looking at data in a way that is quickly understood and easily shared. Now therefore, I, Donald Lovett, Chairman of Liberty County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim November 16th, 2022 as National Geographic Information Systems Day in Liberty County, Georgia, and urge all citizens to participate in the virtual GIS activities planned in Liberty County and Hinesville, Georgia. It witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the great city of Liberty County to be affixed as first Tuesday of November in the year of our Lord, 2022, and in the year of our county, 245. Donald L. Lovett, Chairman, Judge of Brown County Administrator.
You gentlemen coming up for the picture? Clint, are you coming too? The receiver. These are the behind-the-scenes guys that's about a very valuable service to our county. You gentlemen coming up for the picture? Clint, are you coming too? He's in the behind-the-scenes guys that's about a very valuable service to our county. He's in the behind-the-scenes guys that's about a very valuable service to our county. He's in the behind-the-scenes guys that's about a very valuable service to our county. Okay, Commissioners, the minutes from October, October 4th and 20th require our approval. Have you had time to review them and offer motion to approve?
Motion made, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Motion is second. We approve October 4th and October 20th minutes and the further discussion. All in favor, let them show of hands, please. Those opposed, thank you. Minutes are adopted and approved. 2022 Milage Public Hearing. Chairman, ten motion to go into public hearing. Second, all in favor, show of hands. All right, we're now in public hearing for a milage hearing.
Good evening.
Evening.
Some of you were here earlier, so you got to listen to my same little presentation, but bear with me. So what I've done today is we've put together some slides that help kind of paint the picture of where the county has been and where we are right now, and the challenges actually that this board faces. So just to give you a visual of what our general fund budget has done since 2017, and you can see how it's grown, and this is our current budget. The budget that you actually adopted in June of this year was 48.1 million. When we look at our current budget today and we look at where those increases are coming from, I need to remind the Board and everybody, the citizens who are here and the people who are watching at home, of the commitment that this board made to public safety in the area of fire, EMS, and law enforcement. So when you look at our overall budget and what it's done, especially in the last few years, you can see the trend. And the red is the public safety. These three functions, public safety, general government, and judicial, are the three largest areas that make up your general fund budget. So I wanted to compare those so that you can see, you know, what has happened to each of those functions. But basically, what's driving your general fund budget increase is the area of public safety. If you look in, for instance, in 2020, public safety in total had a budget of 12 million. You look at today's budget, it's over 24 million. It's more than doubled. Public safety includes everything from EMS, fire services, all your law enforcement, your transfers out for 911, your coroner, your animal control, your emergency management, anything that has to do with public safety. And so I just want to remind everybody that over these years here, we have stood up full-time firefighting of countywide fire department. We've taken over EMS, and we've also increased our law enforcement. I just kind of wanted to remind everybody what's driving those increases. I also wanted to give you a snapshot of what our general fund balance has done. The blue line represents the total general fund, total general fund balance, and the green is your undesignated, unreserved fund balance. And you can see over the last couple of years how it's increased. And that's good, because when you adopted your budget in June, you actually projected to use about 1.7 million in fund balance. And as that turns out, we're going to need to use a little bit more. This is a picture of what the digest has done. The purple line represents the gross digest. The blue line is the net digest. And here are your exemptions.
Can you explain what the digest is, if you will, please?
Sure. The digest is a compilation of all taxable values in those exemptions. So all of your properties, whether it's real property, personal property, commercial property, utilities, industrial. It's a compilation by district of what those property values are, the exemptions, and then your net digest. And it's your net digest that generates those property taxes that we apply that milage rate to. So you can see right here, this year in 2022, the net digest is 1,541 million. So one mil countywide will produce 1.54 million dollars at 100% collection rate. If I isolate the exemptions, you can see the exemptions have grown significantly. Actually, the growth from last year is about 15%. 381 million dollars in exemptions. We are an exemption-rich county. As a citizen, I love that, because I have definitely applied for everything I qualify for. But as a finance officer, it is a challenge, because those are direct reductions in your taxable income that you're able to produce income from.
Ms. Kim?
Yes, sir.
Would you explain that also? Some of those exemptions are mandated?
Yes, some of those are state mandates, but many of them are local. But I wanted to, if I go back, you can see the digest growth was almost 10%. The gross digest, the exemptions grew at a 15% rate. Here are those exemptions, in case anybody wanted to know, what are those exemptions? Here they are, and they went from 331 million to 381 million. The two largest being the disabled veteran and the Freeport. Those are the two largest. Disabled veteran makes up about 28% of our total exemptions, and Freeport makes up about 47% of our total exemptions. I also wanted to remind everybody of what the milage rate has done. Now, the county has two milage rates. We have one for the citizens who live inside the city limits of Hinesville, and that's not their city tax rate. That is their county tax rate for the citizens inside the city limits of Hinesville. And then we have another milage rate for everybody else, the unincorporated residents and every other resident in all the smaller municipalities. And the reason we have to do that is because we are required by law to roll back the milage rate for those citizens that live inside another taxing district, if that taxing district pays for those same services. So the milage rate for the city of Hinesville residents is remaining the same, 14.8, and has for three years. You are proposing to go from 16.6 to 17.4, 0.8 of a mil. I think this is always a real good chart to look at, because this tells you what type of growth we did experience. And we experienced significant real growth. So the green is the real growth, and the yellow is the reassessed growth. And so you can see on the years where we actually had negative reassessed growth. Matter of fact, this particular year, the net growth was actually a negative amount. Our digest value decreased in total. That's where properties are reassessed downwards instead of upwards. In any year where we had negative real growth, like back in 2014, that means something was actually taken off the digest. And I believe that particular year was the housing out on Fort Stewart that actually had to come off of the digest.
Right.
Let me talk to you about those duplicated services. As I said, we are required by law to roll back for any duplicated services. So that if I'm a citizen in Hinesville, I don't pay for the same service twice, once on my city bill and once on my county tax bill. So some of these duplicated services are noted right here. So the city of Hinesville and the county all pay into these particular services. We either pay into or we provide for. And so as a citizen of Hinesville, I should not have to pay for the library twice. I should only have to pay for it once. It's the same library. Same for LCPC, same for the chamber, same for the senior citizen program. So anything that is a duplicated service, we have to roll back for. So this reconciliation has a lot of information on it, but it is a good chart if you'll take a minute to look at it. The unincorporated digest, 471 million, if we apply the milage rate of 17.4, it'll generate about 8.2 million dollars in revenue. All the other combined cities, except Hinesville's, digest totaled 320 million. We apply the proposed rate and we generate about 5.5 million dollars. And then the city of Hinesville's digest is 749 million, and we apply their rate and it generates a little more than 11 million. Collectively, those rates will generate about 24.8 million dollars in tax revenue. If we reduce that for a 97% collection rate, and as I mentioned earlier today, when we did the calculation, the tax commissioner did come in right at 97%. So that's an excellent collection rate for the first year. It's a good one to use, and it's an accurate one to use. Your general fund budget, as I mentioned when we first adopted in June, was 48.1 million. Since that time, there have been several items that have come up that were not budgeted. So we've had to make some adjustments. We also went into the budget and we cut some things. So we cut a lot of things, but we also had to increase some things. Collectively, it was a net increase of about 363,000 dollars. So your new general fund budget would be 48.48 million dollars, almost 48 and a half million dollars. We back out all the other revenues, other than property taxes. This is what's required from property tax, 28.3 million. You can see right here, we'll have a 4.3 million dollar shortfall. As I mentioned, you had already identified to use 1.7 million dollars in fund balance to cover any shortfall. But now you're going to be needing to use a little bit more. Additionally, I have sent out this information, and I am going to be meeting with other elected officials and department heads next week to talk about holding the line. Because when you talk about a 48 million dollar budget, it's not unreasonable to save 2 million dollars at the end of the year. It's not unreasonable. We did it before. You saw fund balance before, where we've increased fund balance. That wasn't because revenues came in over budget. That was because we held the line on expenses and didn't use all of our budget. And I think we can do it again. I think if everybody pulls their weight and makes a conscious effort to do so. Now, of that shortfall, like I said, you will be using the original 1.7 million dollars for those one-time expenditures, whether it's for the pension shore-up or capital. But now you're going to be using a little bit more, another 1.2 million for additional capital items and additional pension shortfall. The other 850,000 or so would be for recurring items if you chose to do so. All in all, I believe that we could use about 2.3, 2.4 million in fund balance to cover the one-time items, and we could just hope that we could hold the line and not have to use the other 2 million for those recurring costs. Again, that would take a collective effort by everybody.
Ms. Kim, for the public, would you explain what's a good amount on fund balance to have on hand?
So your fund balance policy says that you should maintain anywhere from three to seven months of operational expenditures in your undesignated, unreserved fund balance. Now, depending on the time of year, that can vary. So we get the bulk of our revenues from property taxes. So that comes in once you send out those bills. If the bills are generated in December, we will start getting a large push of cash flow, probably in the January, February, March timeframe. So you'll see fund balance shoot way up, and then the rest of the months, it'll come down. During this time, October, November, September, October, November, these are your lean months, and you could very well drop below the three-month pinpoint that you put in your fund balance policy. I think I reported last month, when we reported on August, we had 3.3 months of undesignated, unreserved fund balance. I'm sure when we present at your mid-month meeting, your September report, my guess is it'll drop. It could drop again in November until we get that inflow of revenue, and then it'll go back up. And it could go up higher than seven. But sometimes when you increase your budget so much, your monthly operations increase so much, too. So that was part of the issue. When you try and compare this year to a year ago, our budget from last year has increased almost 6.5, 7 million dollars. So those monthly operation amounts are a lot more than they were a year ago. So let me give you a few examples of what this actually means in dollars. So in Hinesville, since we're holding the rate the same, if your property value has not been reassessed, if it did not increase because of a reassessment, you will have no increase in property tax, whether it's for a 150,000 dollar home or a 250,000 dollar home. Again, if your property has increased, though, of course, your taxes will increase, because it's all based on your assessed value. When we look at the unincorporated area where we're proposing a milage rate increase, on a 150,000 dollar home, you'll see about a 48 dollar increase in property tax. Again, this is with the preface that your property value remains the same from last year to this year. If your property value itself is increased, then your taxes are going to go up no matter what, because we have not decreased the milage rate. We did not roll it back. On a 250,000 dollar home, the increase would be about 80 dollars. I'm going to take you to a couple more examples to try and explain the total picture. So in Hinesville, for a 150,000 dollar home, because the Board of Education reduced their milage rate, and because the city of Hinesville is going to reduce their milage rate, you will actually have a savings, provided your property value itself did not increase. And on that 250,000 dollar home, again, you'll have an 85 dollar tax savings. And we can thank the Board of Ed and the city of Hinesville for that. Both of them rolled back, not all the way, so they still had to have three public hearings. They still had to advertise a property tax increase, even though they did reduce it, they didn't roll it all the way back. Now, if we look at this same scenario for the unincorporated citizens in all the other municipalities, that 150,000 dollar home, you'll have an increase of 48 dollars in property tax, a decrease in the Board of Education. So your overall increase on a 150,000 dollar home is going to be 9 dollars. For a 250,000 dollar home in the unincorporated area in other little cities, you'll have an 80 dollar increase for Liberty County taxes, a reduction of 65 dollars for your school board taxes, so you'll have a total increase of 15 dollars.
Right. And those, I went blink on, but those numbers are given without any exemptions, correct?
No exemptions and no, yes, if you have exemptions, it'll be even less. If your property was reevaluated upwards, it'll be more.
Okay.
Is that the end? That's all I have, unless anybody has some questions.
I just want to make this note, since we have some visiting in our office today. Ms. Glenda Roberts came before us a few months ago to inform the Commission and the general public that reassessments would be different. I'll try to explain this as best as I can. I'm not articulate with this, but the state has certain rates of reassessment that Glenda has to do on our properties. And because of all the sales that have gone the last year, two years,
And on that two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, again, you'll have an eighty-five dollar tax savings. And we can thank the Board of Ed and the city of Heinzville for that. Both of them rolled back not all the way, so they still had to have a three public hearings. They still had to advertise a property tax increase, even though they did reduce it, they didn't roll it all the way back. Now if we look at this same scenario for the unincorporated citizens and all the other municipalities, that hundred and fifty thousand dollar home, you'll have an increase of forty-eight dollars in property tax, a decrease in the Board of Education. So your overall increase on a hundred and fifty thousand dollar home is going to be nine dollars. For a two hundred and fifty thousand dollar home in the unincorporated area and other little cities, you'll have an eighty dollar increase for Liberty County taxes, a reduction of sixty-five dollars for your school board taxes. So you'll have a total increase of fifteen dollars.
You got a question?
Right. And, and those, I went blink on, but those numbers are, are given without any exemptions, correct?
No exemptions and no, yes, if you have exemptions, it'll be even less. If your property was reevaluated upwards, it'll be more.
Okay.
Is that the end?
That's all I have unless anybody has some questions.
I just want to make this note since we have some visiting in our office today. Ms. Glenda Roberts came before us a few months ago to inform the commission and the general public that reassess, reassessments would be different. Try to explain this as best as I can. I'm not articulate with this. But the state has certain rates of reassessment that Glenda has to do on our properties. And because of all the sales that have gone the last year, two years, her office is trying not to, how do I say it? Overburden the citizens on a new rate based on all the new growth. So, so she chose a rate that was moderate. But she has since found out that rate does not meet the state ratio. And she came here and that's all I'm wondering about. I forgot what meeting it was, but she explained that in detail to us. She tried to help us out. But I'm not putting it here, but when she, when the state, when she compared with the state's average, we were low. So she's going, so next time around, she's going to have to readjust. So be within the state's ratio, otherwise we get fined.
Mr. Chairman, would you explain what her duties are to tax assessor's office?
Her office, I guess, her G S man, your assessments, your property values, they come out of her office. That's what she does.
Assessments.
Assessments, yeah.
They assess all property, commercial, industrial, real property, personal property.
Sometimes my friend over there, he gets blamed for it. Mr. Jones, but it's not, he just sends the bills out.
He doesn't set the rate. He doesn't do the assessments, but I'm sure he's the first one they call.
He just sends the bills out.
That's right.
But Glenda doesn't do it haphazardly. The standard she has to meet, you know? So, so when she does it, it does by the state standards. And if you don't, you get, young people say you get dinged. You get dinged. All right. I just wanted to share that with our general arts.
All right, commissioners, before I ask the public, any, any comments you all want to wait to see what? My commissioners?
Kim, I want to go back to the one I, I looked at today earlier, the exemptions. Just want to reiterate what I made note of today is the two highest is the disabled vet, which we all who are vets deserve what's coming to us. And the other one is the free port, which is, what'd you say, seventy, forty-seven percent?
What, forty-seven percent of?
Forty-seven percent exemptions. And I, I've said before to this board that maybe one now, we need to educate the public, the taxpayers, citizens, what free port is. How long has it been at a hundred percent? And let them know, do it needs to stay at one hundred percent. And I understand that, yeah, we have to do something to entice companies to come in. But do we have to give them the country store for the lifetime? Thank you.
You, you have the right to reevaluate. Once, once the contract turns in, you can reevaluate at that time and see what the exemption would be. But as, as you very well said, it's a very competitive process. I was in a meeting the other day at Savannah Tech and the young lady from Effingham kind of was there and she said, here goes my competition. Just, you know, thank you for being so, so you all know, we're competing with our neighbors, you know, to get industry and get economics. For a long time, and Jeff says it best, for a long time, we depended on Fort Stew to be our economic engine, our bread and butter. Most of our population work at Fort Stew, a large part of them do. So we're trying to diversify that so we don't depend on Fort Stew. So we're trying to build up the, the industrial parks to help. That's why Tire Rack and Target or people down there to help bring good jobs to Liberty County. But it's a very competitive process. Everybody's trying to do the same thing. And the young lady from Effingham, she called me her competition because they're always competing against us trying to get industry into, into Liberty County. So it's a very competitive process. You got to make sure you're in the game. You got to make sure, if you're not in the game, you won't win. But he's right. You can't examine that anytime and say, well, do we need this, do we need that? But you, but you, but you want to do it strategically. You don't want to do it haphazardly because you could hurt yourself. Hurt yourself or hurt the county. All right. Now, I know this may be a lot for some of you, but some of you may have picked up on a little bit of what's going on. I don't want to say that you haven't. So are there any questions about this process about our, our millage hearing? Can I answer any questions you may have? No question is a bad question. In fact, I love to educate. I, I love to educate. Because if I wasn't sitting up here, I wouldn't know half of this stuff.
I encourage people to ask questions and to get involved and, and often, sometimes it's frustrating because people come to this meeting, but they don't come to the budget public hearing. So that's kind of where things start is when we adopt our budget. So I like when I see citizens come for both because then they can be involved in what we actually approve for the budget. And then when we set the millage to support that budget.
Let me say this too, when I mentioned about Ms. Roberts' office doing assessment and those property values going up statewide, not just Liberty County, statewide. So everybody's undergoing that same process. She was trying to help us out, let me be very clear, and not set our rate so high, but it was a little too low. So the state will give you opportunity to, mama would say, to fix that. Let me say this too, you may notice that the city of Heinzville and B O E are able to roll back theirs. One thing, they don't have to continue what we do, all the exemptions, that's just on the county side. So put in the plane, they get to keep all their money. Houses are pieced up, split into several little pieces.
The other thing too, I, I think is important to note, and, and I forgot to mention this when we were talking about public safety. Now the fire, the fire budget itself, last year, I think was somewhere around two point six or two point four million. And this year it's over four million. This year we have a full year of EMS. That's a two million dollar loss, two million dollar loss. Now one mil brings in one point five four million. So you have increased your countywide fire protection budget and you've taken on EMS, but you've only proposed to increase by point eight of a mil when the EMS loss alone is more than a mil. So, you know, I, I think you're doing what you can to help ease the burden, but at the same time, you are utilizing some of that fund balance that we talked about. When you go, I'm sorry, when you go back to this fund balance, and I'm glad we do have it, you know, we were able to save. Now you're probably going to need it. But you, I cautious, I caution you when you use fund balance for those reoccurring expenses. You know, it's one thing to use it for that one-time capital need or that one-time pension shortfall. But when you use it to supplement normal recurring expenses, that's a dangerous practice.
Jim, Ms. Kim, can you go back and reiterate what I mentioned also today about when houses or projects go on to digest? And also, keep in mind that the one or two state exemptions that's there that comes out of Atlanta, it's mandated, but when it gets down to each county in the state of Georgia, the citizens of that county has to make up that difference. They do not send any money from Atlanta to make, make it up. So that makes a difference. So if the digest grows, the exemptions is eating it up.
The digest values. So it's based on what was actually completed as of January one. Even though there might have been homes or businesses that were completed maybe in April or May, those are not going to be taxed this year because they were not completed as of January one. So anything that was completed as of January one is what's on the digest each year.
Mr. Chairman, I said earlier today when we had our first hearing, we have some of our department heads and our elected officials in here. And hopefully, we will be able to stay within budget that we approved already for your budget. And we'll be able to save some money, which we have in the past. Don't get me wrong. Been real good about that. And we won't have to dip into that fund balance per se and have to take any out. If so, maybe we won't have to take that much out because I'm all about saving it. Never know when we have an emergency that we have to
Right.
get something repaired. So, but I want to give that a shout out to our department heads and elected officials. You've done a great job in the past. Let's keep it up, keep it in our budget or less.
A, a, as long as everybody's mindful, and I thought we had a great turnout.
We did.
Lunch. I was, I was so pleased to see so many department heads and elected officials show up today to hear about this because this is their budgets.
That's right.
This is their budgets that you are supporting and it is your job with the hard decision of what you need to do for that. So I, I was.
Maybe we won't see anyone have to amend their budget this year either.
Like I said, you know, it, it, those, those departments that have the multi-million dollar budget, it's probably easier for them to save two, three, four hundred thousand than it is for, I don't know, somebody who's got an eighty thousand dollar.
Go ahead and pick him out.
No offense, Coroner. I'm just, you know, that's just a for instance.
That's, that's true.
I, I mean, I can also think like state court too. I mean, there is, his budget is teeny, teeny tiny. And it's really only him and his assistant, you know? So there's not a lot of savings that can take place in that. But certainly in some of those other budgets that are more than a million dollars, I think collectively, we can try and hold the line.
And while we do have some folks here in the audience with us tonight, and I appreciate y'all coming out, but safety has, their budget's definitely gone up, but that's not something you're going to make money off of.
No.
But that's something, if something happens to you or your home, you want them to be there. And I want them to be there for you or for all the citizens of Liberty County.
I will say it, it was a commitment that the board made.
You don't make money.
And, and you have seen it through. I mean, and, and this seems like the biggest year because it's like the final year of getting the fire department. And then we tacked on the EMS too, so it was kind of a double win.
Double hit.
But I, like I said, I think we've done a great job and, and you've just been mindful about what your priorities are as a commission and what you're, what you're wanting to do. And public safety was one of the big ones. But you, you can see how it doubled from, you know, two thousand and twenty to now.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chairman, I was always, how you doing, Kim? I was always interested in the makeup of the fire department. How many of the proposed firefighters have we gotten on board now? I think we budgeted for thirty-six full-time firefighters. How many do we have at present?
I think we have more than that. And we have a training class, right?
Yes, they're at, they're at staffing level. And they've got a training class coming in that'll hopefully help fill some of those lots that are supposed to really come open when the new station opens.
And one of the things we went back in to do when we looked at the budget is some of those requests that were not put in their budget, that were put in kind of a holding department, was, you know, those lieutenants and so forth. We've decided to defer some of those and stagger that because you had originally said, okay, we'll bring nine lieutenants on in January. Well, that, that's not happening now. So we've took a, a hard look at that and deferred some of those and pushed that back too. So. Trying to keep with the plan, but more manageable, maybe a little slower.
I, I guess, I, I was going to wait and, and let the, the public speak, but I guess I go ahead. Just a, a few things that, that was brought to my attention as well, whenever, whenever we looked at the millage setting and, and also just some of the other comments that were made from my fellow commissioners as well. And, and I know we, we discussed about the, the free port tax prior. And my stance is still the same on that. I, I don't necessarily think that's where we need to be looking at with that. Because even if you look at the statistical data that backs that up, out of the hundred and fifty-nine counties in the state of Georgia, there's only one, two, three, four, five, six, seven in the entire state that don't have any free port tax exemption. And if I gave you those, name of those counties, you probably never heard of. And that's the reason why.
Right.
Because they have zero economic development there. And, and just like you were saying earlier, in this, this highly competitive industry, we're going to have to stay where we are or lose what we have, in my opinion. Because our, our class is still set at the same rate as Scriven County, FAM County, Chatham County, Bryan County, Tannen County, and Toombs. So those are our competitive neighbors. And this, and this data came out in, from A C C G, September twenty twenty-two. About public safety, we all understand and we, we all made a commitment to, to make sure that our citizens, especially in our unincorporated areas, were going to make sure that whenever you call nine-one-one, that someone was going to answer. And then not only someone was going to answer, but someone was going to respond. And I think that we've all done a great job with that commitment. But also with that being said, and I think Commissioner Thrift just said, a lot of those new projects that we have taken on bring zero dollars to us. And I think I've been up here preaching for a while that we do need to figure out some type of possible revenue generating project to offset this. And then also earlier this year at our county, county commission workshop, I, I presented us to come up with a Liberty County Economic Development Authority to help bring some more economic, commercial development throughout this whole county. And I think we're looking at this, I think that should be one of our top priorities moving forward. Because we need more growth. Since we have more growth, we need to make sure that we have some commercial growth. So we won't keep getting all the dollars from off the rooftops, in my opinion. So fellow commissioners, I wish we could kind of move, move that project up to the front. Thank you.
You know, I just want to remind some, this, remind everyone as well, like we did earlier. If, if you are a business owner, and I know some of you are, you know that the cost of supplies and the cost of services
Is increasing.
has increased. And it's no different for your local government. It, it's no different. Whether it's health insurance, whether it's the cost of printer cartridges or, you know, rock. Whatever it is, whatever we, we purchase, it's gone up just like everything else. So it's been a challenge, but, you know, when you increase your budget by six and a half million dollars, even though we had significant real growth, it's not enough to cover an increase of six and a half million dollars to your general fund budget. And this was one of the largest general fund budget increases that I've ever seen since I've been here. But again, it, it was kind of the last hurrah, let's get this up and running, you know, and hopefully we can level out.
Chairman, Kim, thank you again. Did a good job today and you did a good job tonight. We, we've talked about funding these different things, of course, with the coroner and everything else that we're looking at. We're talking about something that we've never had in Liberty County, a full-time fire department. We can build the facilities with some sales tax.
Yes.
But we got to pay these individuals out of the general fund.
That's true.
The general fund's largest contributor right now is housing. I mean, we've got housing and subdivisions and things like that that are coming up. Now, you can call Heinzville a bedroom community, but we still have property that's in an industrial process and we'll, we'll move forward with it. But that is one of the biggest things. We've got to make sure that we're still focused on a lot of the residential areas, the old ones and the new ones. We got to make sure that if we've got areas to build in, let's build in them. In, in Commissioner Jones's district down there now, we've got the, the Habersham plantation, I guess it's just about built out. Where did all those people come from? I don't have no idea, but it's full. So you know, the, the old thing about building and it'll come, that's one thing. But if you've got a full-time fire department and all of these nice trucks and the employees and you've got to depend on the general fund, like you said, has grown more than anything that is, than it's ever been in the history of this county. That's, that right there is the only place we're going to get our, get our money right now. Now there's other resources that we can look at, but, you know, have we got time to study them? Yes, we can study them. It's kind of like Commissioner Fraser said, you know, we, we'll be looking at other avenues that will produce some type of income.
Yeah, fire departments don't generate revenue.
Do what?
I said, fire departments definitely don't generate revenue.
I mean, it's, it's, it's just something that, it's, it's a necessity that you got to have, just like an ambulance. I mean, we can buy a new ambulance, but, I mean, we can buy some equipment with sales tax with the road department. But you can't pay those guys with nothing but the general fund.
That's correct.
You know, we talked about it today. One of the key issues is to keep this fund balance in moderation. Commissioner Thrift brought it up, you know, we need to get it back to where, when, you know, a mile of know, a mile of water line's broke, then we gonna have to fix it. We're gonna have money to fix it. So, again, it's, it's not anything that we haven't been faced with before, we've just got something new. So we're just gonna have to move forward and, and, and make it work. Easiest thing to do is nothing, and we're not gonna do nothing. Now, there'll be people that'll fight and fuss, but, you know, when you got an older gentleman and, and his, some of his folks in his church met us, right back there standing in that hall says, I just want clean drinking water. We took it on the chin, John McIver went out there, and we got a well, and now we got clean drinking water. You don't have to worry about a cricket crawling in that pressure switch and knocking it out. We've got something. So I'm just saying, thank you for what you've done. I appreciate you, you know, keeping those pennies rolled up. Don't just use the nipple rollers, just, just reach down and get them all, okay?
Okay.
Take a picture for us of those pennies you got rolled up in.
I'm saying, better go dig for some more.
I'm, I'm just, I'm gonna be real frank with you, I'm, I'm not scared of the budget, but it, it's gonna be some, it's gonna be challenging. We ain't gonna have as many lots on next.
All right, thank you, sir.
Any online questions, Clint?
I'd like to hear something from our administrator.
What would you like to hear, sir?
I wanna hear your take.
My take is the same. My take is that you just make a strong commitment to public safety. There were calls that were basically going unanswered, both on the EMS side because of staffing and equipment availability and on the fire side. And, you know, I, I wouldn't say that you can guarantee a hundred percent for the next twenty years that you'll never have a call because, because those call volumes are going up. But you made a significant investment, both in, in capital assets, as Kim said, and in staffing, and it's paid off. It really has, and I'm proud of that. Other thing is, on the fireside, and I thought she was fixing to mention this, is that the city of Heinzville obviously has their full-time fire department. We're relying on volunteers. We do spend a, a good bit of time supporting the smaller municipalities too. And that's what we need to note, we're helping them. So increase this to unincorporated and unincorporated other, this proposed, I think is legitimate. We are going into those municipalities and helping out with emergency services, which is good. I commit, I'm very proud of what you've been able to do.
Thank you.
All right, he kind of, he kind of took, I want to also mention, speaking with Commissioner Thrift a few meetings ago, that people in her district, you know, especially in the Gumbray area, has seen some relief in their homeowners' policy for.
Your homeowners' insurance because of the ISO rating?
And, and I know that happened in the Ottawa area also, so by having the Canada Fire Department, it's helped some folk with the homeowners' insurance, having the full-time fire department. And, I mean, many of you know, we're doing the one, the headquarters at Joseph Miller Park, will help us out also. And you see those signs that posted in front says S.P.L.O.S.T.? It's all sponsored out. And why is that important, Chairman? Because, listen, doing those large projects, we couldn't, if we did it from the general fund, you would see.
No, we could never. We, we wouldn't be.
We wouldn't do it.
Couldn't.
Wouldn't do it. So, so that one penny, that's on the ballot, I'm gonna leave it, that's on the ballot, that's on the ballot. It's very important to us, to allow us to keep doing those kind of projects that, that help everybody, everybody.
You're not trying to make a sale, are you?
I'm voting for it, okay? I don't wanna be politic. I know we're live streaming, but I'm gonna vote for it.
I know some of you have early voted, and I hope you didn't, but some of you, if you hadn't voted, please take a good look at the S.P.L.O.S. item on there. All right, this time we're going to close this public hearing, chair a term motion, and go out of public hearing, back in the regular session.
Move.
Second.
All in favor, show of hands? All right, good session, good session. Thank you, Ms. McGough, again for. All right, bottom end reports, Ms. Sanchez and Mr. Rickenson. Liberty Crossing Phase One.
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners, evening, sorry. Here we go. So I'm, I'm here to present the Liberty Crossing Phase One preliminary plat and variance requests. This is a development by Josh Wheeler that was designed by Emmy Sac Engineering. It is sixty-seven lots for single-family dwellings on approximately fifty-eight acres. It is zoned R1 and located on Leroy Cofer Highway. So it's not too far from the intersection of Oglethorpe here. Here's another vicinity map. Oglethorpe is down here. You've noticed most of this has been cleared. You've driven by there at any point in the last six months or so. So when this was rezoned, this was a map that was presented. It had a total of a hundred and fifty-four lots, and Phase One is a sixty-seven lots in, sorry, in approximately what the area here that is shaded in purple. Again, there's Ogle, Leroy Cofer Highway is right up here. The development and standards in R1 has a twelve thousand square foot minimum lot size with a hundred-foot minimum width. The setbacks are shown there, the front at thirty-five and rear at twenty-five, and the side anywhere from fifteen to twenty if it's a corner lot. The lots range in size for the subdivision from just under twenty-two thousand square feet to fifty-three thousand square feet. All the lots will be on the Liberty County water system, public water system, and will have individual on-site septic systems. So this is the overall preliminary plat. Again, what's outlined in red, here are the limits of Phase One and is being platted. What's outlined in the blue here is the future phase. We'll have the remaining lots. There are three sheets that go with this. The first sheet shows this front area here, the second one in more detail, close-up view, this area here, and the third one is in that quadrant there. So we'll just kind of quickly pass through those. Leroy Cofer, I just want to make note that there is a U-turn cut through here on Leroy Cofer that's pertinent to one of the variances that is coming up. And that's the bottom part, and that is right part and the parcel area table. So that makes up the preliminary plat. So the dedications that go with this preliminary plat, you have two tracks. It actually kind of looks like one, the blue, that kind of makes a horseshoe shape here, but it is in two because the road kind of breaks it up here. It's a total of eleven acres. The land itself is being dedicated to the HOA, but because there are stormwater drainage ponds and other swales and things like that, there are drainage easements that are being dedicated to the county in that blue area. The purple, pink lines here, those are also drainage easements being dedicated to the county. Those are for either culverts underground or flumes that are on top that carry the stormwater to those blue areas. Other dedications to the county include almost a mile of new streets and the water and stormwater improvements, because they will be extending the public water system out there within the subdivision. And then the HOA gets those two tracks of eleven acres. So as I mentioned, we have two variance requests that need to be granted prior to the preliminary plat being approved. One of them has to deal with the maximum length of temporary dead-end streets. So this is a provision that's in your subdivision regulations, and basically it says you can have a permanent cul-de-sac dead-end street. It can't be any longer than twelve hundred feet in length, and at the end of it, the cul-de-sac has to be an eighty-foot diameter. When you have a temporary dead-end street, which there are two of them within this preliminary plat, the provision says you can't have a dead-end street that's longer than six hundred feet long, and then the turnaround at the end has to be a thirty-foot radius or sixty-foot diameter. So the variance is needed because you have a cul-de-sac here, a temporary cul-de-sac here, and a temporary dead-end here. This pink part here is actually over eleven hundred feet long. And as I just read, the requirement is that you can't have more than six hundred-foot-long temporary dead-end. So they need a variance from that requirement. This section on variances is pretty much the same as in the zoning, but this comes out of the subdivision regulations. And on the next few slides, there are four conditions that have to be met, all of them in order for variance to qualify for being granted. The first one is that there have to be exceptional or extraordinary conditions pertaining to this particular piece of property, generally due to its shape, size, or topography. And in this case, there's, there's none of those, there are no extraordinary conditions on this property. Second condition is that the standards would create a hardship, and no hardship has been demonstrated if they were to have to make that dead-end six hundred feet comply with that provision. As I noted, that the, the conditions are supposed to be peculiar to this particular piece of property, and as there are no, there are no exceptional conditions that this criteria isn't met. And then the last criteria is that the relief, if granted, would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good or impair the purposes intent of this article, which is the subdivision regulations. There would be no detriment to the public if the temporary turnaround were enlarged to the standard eighty-foot diameter size that is required for permanent cul-de-sacs. Because that way, you have the larger size and that, for emergency vehicles to be able to easily turn around. So that's the first variance, the maximum length on a dead-end street. The second one is the requirement for two accesses for a subdivision that has seventy-five lots or more. So this is the first part of that provision that requires two accesses. The pertinent part of that provision is that in a subdivision width or the potential for seventy-five or more lots, two or more access streets shall be provided to existing public streets unless a variance is granted. So that leads us to the second variance. The rezoning map, you know, here's Leroy Cofer, and this, between here and here is the entire frontage of the property. They did show two accesses, like the subdivision regulations require. This preliminary plat, again, here's the frontage along Leroy Cofer, is now only showing one. So going to the variance criteria for this provision, the extraordinary exceptional conditions to this particular, particular piece of property are that it has only twelve hundred, I say only, it is, that's not actually that much for a subdivision this size, only twelve hundred feet of frontage on Leroy Cofer. And GDOT did not approve two accesses. In part because they couldn't, in that twelve hundred feet, they couldn't get sufficient spacing for the fifty-five mile-an-hour posted speed limit between the two accesses. You can't have the two accesses, accesses too close together at that speed. And the other one has to do with that U-turn that I showed you previously. That U-turn, it would be negatively impacted by having two accesses because the U-turn would be very close to an access, and you don't want people entering out of the subdivision and people U-turning. It just creates too much of a conflict point. So GDOT did not approve the two accesses. The application of the standards to this particular property would create an unnecessary hardship because they wouldn't, wouldn't be able to go forward, the project would be dead as designed without, because they couldn't get that GDOT approval. The third consideration is that these conditions are peculiar to this particular piece of property. It could be, perhaps, but there may be other properties along, if not Leroy Cofer, maybe on other state highways with unincorporated Liberty County, that might have that same set of circumstances where you have a divided median and GDOT wouldn't approve the two accesses. This isn't quite peculiar to this particular property. And then lastly, the last condition consideration is that it wouldn't, if granted, it would not cause a substantial detriment to the public good. And in fact, relief is needed, so there wouldn't be a detriment to the public good, so this criteria is definitely satisfied. So that brings us to our three decisions we have to make this evening. I recommend that we do this in order, we get to hit each variance, and then, because if either those is denied, the planning, the preliminary plat can't be approved. So the first recommendation for the planning commission is for, they recommend approval of the variance for the maximum temporary dead-end street. So to allow it to be over eleven hundred feet long. However, their recommendation is with the condition that the temporary dead-end have an eighty-foot diameter, I should say diameter, not radius, that it be bonded and that the subdivision be extended and built out within two years, or the bond will be called. Now, the reasoning behind this is, is they want to have it prepped out for the standard full-size cul-de-sac at the end of this. And it's bonded such that if, if somehow the project goes belly up and it never goes any further, you can call the bond and have that temporary dead-end turned into a permanent one that meets the full requirements, you know, curve and gutter paving and everything else at the standard size.
When you say, I'm following you, extended and built out according to this plan, not additional lots for a future date?
The, the subdivision shall be extended and built out, meaning Phase Two, the future phase they showed, which shows that road looping around, so you wouldn't have a temporary.
Can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
Within two years.
Within two years.
So basically, this is just a protection?
Protection. If, if something goes wrong, you're not left with a small sixty-foot.
Right there, right here, right there, is that a street coming on out? Is that the one you're talking about?
Mm-hmm. Actually, I'm gonna go back further because I realize now that my little note here kind of blocks. I'm gonna go back a lot farther. That blocks it too. The overall, okay, there. So you can see this is a temporary dead-end, but that road will eventually loop around here, so it will no longer be a cul-de-sac.
Cul-de-sac, so this is just temporary?
Correct.
Okay.
Phase one.
Yes.
Let me ask, Mr. Chairman, I want to ask a question there. The two years to build out, how many total lots is it?
The remaining, the whole thing was a hundred and fifty-four maximum number of lots. They have sixty-seven, so in this phase, so it'd be another, what is it? My math doesn't sound like great, eighty or so.
Only reason I'm questioning that was, I mean, I have found out lately that just merchandise, rock, asphalt, and everything is in such a high demand everywhere else that, you know, that could be an issue. And I would, I would hope that, you know, that it would be built out in twenty-four months. But if, if a person can't get, I mean, let's just say, he's gonna have to put some water, some fire hydrants in there.
Yes.
And if he's not able to put the fire hydrants in because of a shortage or something, I mean, that's, that's an issue.
He would come back to us, wouldn't he?
Sir?
Think he would come back to us, wouldn't he?
Yeah, I, I mean, you, you have the option of making that two years a longer period. That was the recommendation of the planning commission, but you'd also.
That's what I'm asking the question here. I, I don't know because I just have heard, and it was a gentleman said that he ordered PVC pipe to water some trees, and the price went up four hundred percent.
Yes.
In a week. So, you know, what you're planning on here, this is a subdivision there that we looked at earlier in the year, so we didn't have that issue in March. But now, if we're, if, if you're gonna have to put water, septic tank pipe, drain field and stuff like that, anything that is, you know.
Ask it.
I just wanna make sure that, I mean, the builder, where's he at?
The developer and the engineer are both here, so I'm sure they, they'd be happy to.
This yours, Marcus?
Yes.
Well, I mean, I'm, I'm just asking a question. What, what's your feelings on it? I mean, what timeframe, you know, you've got something written down here, and you wanna use it when it's necessary to use it?
Two, two years is probably a little tight when you're talking about this, the size of development. Probably somewhere around eight, eight to twelve months to build the site prior to vertical and you start selling lots. So two years would probably be a little short. Maybe it'd be one of those things where they come back within that time period and say, hey, we're, we're still moving forward, this is where we are. We need an extension on that.
Well, I, I mean, as long as. Well, I mean, as long as it's in Commissioner Jones's district and I just, you know, we've got projects that we've got to do in the county that is nearly impossible to get built because of materials. And I just want to make sure that we don't put somebody's feet to the fire. That's all I'm going to say. I mean, I would say if it looks like it's going to be a little bit longer, then we need to go ahead and make sure you and whoever the builder is going to be, let's, let's have a meeting and come up here and get a longer, extend the timeframe on it.
Right, that would be helpful. And I think, you know, another approach, if we, if we approve the variance, that would be great. Maybe we, we look at not doing the full length of that cul-de-sac initially until we have a better feel. So maybe we try to keep it at the 300 feet until, and after that 300 feet, it gets built a little later or something like that.
I got you, well.
To extend that timeline to.
I'm, I mean, I'm, I try to support growth in the county because every dime off of that, it generates sales tax. And that's what I'm looking at. And then again, in the end, it generates ad lorm tax. So as long as it's a clean, neat thing, then that's what we need to have. Affordable housing for everybody, I don't care who they are. And so I'm just saying, let's make sure that if that needs to happen, you know, we're going, we're going to need to make a decision on it, so.
Yes, sir, I appreciate that.
Thanks, sir.
I had to offer, I didn't have much to offer.
Yeah, I think from a construction perspective, like I said, if you guys approve the variance, we would appreciate that in the construction phase. Again, we may try to stay closer to that 300 so we don't enact that variance. If we do it, that works. If we have to enact it, then we'll come back and talk to you. 600, thank you, 600, thank you.
All right.
Who's district, Mr. Chairman?
We're trying to figure it out, that yours or?
My district, I'll just sit and wait. Go back to where you said you was going, the drainage is going to be dedicated to the county. What part is going to be dedicated to the county?
What's going to be dedicated to the county is all drainage easements. These are all easements, it's not outright ownership of the land. Is what's in blue and then those purple lines.
How much foot is that?
How much, I'm sorry?
What's the length of that?
I did not measure out the total length of all those. I don't know if Marcus.
Marcus, do you know, what's the length, length on that?
I know, we can do, we can look at some, every lot is somewhere around 220 feet deep. So that's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight of those. So 1,600 linear feet of easements there.
Is this open ditch?
Most of those are either.
You can tell he did good in math.
Pipes or flumes. The open ditches are the blue areas to the left and the right. We did make these really wide, maintainable slopes with a large flat area so that we can get up and down those. They're not part of a lot, they're actually right-ofways, they're not easements. So we tried to make this a very maintainable community from a drainage perspective.
Just want to say to this board, there's a, this is another issue that we're having with the county. This is another attachment onto the road department that we already have. They are running short, so let's keep this in mind. How can we overcome issues like this in the future?
Okay, what is that? Is that K Creek on the backside? Is that K Creek?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Marcus, on those easements, the ones that run north and south, is that, I mean, are they wide enough that we can get, that we can maintain them from the bank?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Because I know that the county doesn't have a spotter that can get inside. So you could put a truck and an excavator and mow them if you have to or do everything you can from the bank. You got enough room?
That's right, that's right. You know, some kind of, I don't know if y'all have got the attachment that goes down to the slope?
Yeah, we do.
They got that? I was just wondering about, you know, if you've got enough bank to put a truck up there if you had to.
There is enough for a truck, yeah.
Okay, okay, good.
I think what I was referencing was employees, that's what I was referencing. The amount of employees, that's, that's not, that's not your control.
All right, you recommending we do this, P. Spiegel?
You can't approve the preliminary plat if the variances aren't granted.
You ready for that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, I'm ready.
Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the variance on this project.
Second.
Second, we approve the variance as presented. Any further discussion of what we had? All in favor, by show of hand, please. All right, variance approved.
The second variance, the planning commission recommended approval from the requirement for two accesses. So that they, that would allow them then to have that one access.
But DOT made that decision, didn't it?
Pretty much, yeah.
Just, I got a quick question though. You know, really, maybe staff, Marcus, you may, you know, she talked about the having the one access and then the speed limit 55 right in there. So will DOT reconsider now that our subdivisions are going to be in that area? That 55, that's fast for people coming in and out of?
We talked a little bit about that at the rezoning. And I think we kind of came to the decision that policing was our best effort. And I've seen plenty of that on that road since then, but I can't tell you that the speeds have decreased either. So, you know, I don't, I don't think that GDOT would decrease the speed. If they did a speed study, they'd probably say, we may need to make this 65 miles an hour based on that.
But Joe, we could recommend that through Hapo though, to look at it, okay?
Be worth it. I did want to mention in regards to the single entrance, we didn't just throw our hands up and say, okay, we've got a single entrance, that's all we can do. I do want you to know that we made the lanes wider. So instead of an 11-foot lane, there's our 15-foot wide lane. So we've got a total of 30-foot entryway there. If something were to happen, we can still get an emergency vehicle through.
But when they come out now, they will make a right, they will make a right.
That's correct.
Go down and then make a U-turn.
Assuming they were coming back into.
Hansel.
That's right.
Okay.
Okay, all right.
Mr. Chairman, make that motion.
Second.
Okay.
Second, approve of the variance from the two accesses to one. All in favor, show of hands, please, all right.
And then finally, the planning commission regarding the preliminary plat, now that both the variants have been granted, recommends approval of the preliminary plat with standard conditions.
Chairman, take the motion.
No move.
Second. Any further discussion? All in favor, by show of hands? Marcus, I want to thank you guys too for being considerate beyond what is standard. Even the way you're doing the interest, we appreciate that. Anytime you can do something to work with the local community, it's just, it's highly appreciated. Yeah, and you'll be seeing us again. Appreciate that, even the way.
Developer, that's Josh Wheeler.
The way you're doing the ditches so our people can access them, we appreciate all that. Thank you so much.
Y'all be careful.
Good evening, Chairman Lovett, members of the commission.
Oh, sir.
Our next item is a request by Claude Dryden, doing business at Walter Hill Properties LLC. He's wanting to rezone a tract of land at the intersection of Bill Carter Road and Louis Fraser Road from A1 to R1 in order to build a single-family residential subdivision.
Public here, oh, that's right, rezoning. Should I take a motion to go back into?
Second.
All in favor, Chairman? All right, thank you.
This is the add in the Coastal Courier, this is the sign. We got a sign on each one of the roads, Bill Carter and Louis Fraser. This is the property, you can see it's kind of got a flag shape there. This is Bill Carter Road, this is Louis Fraser Road. The proposing entrances on both, both streets. And this is the flood map, just showing the, the flood map on this. This property borders the Peacock Canal. So there is some flood plain along the edge of this property here. For the most part, the property is high and dry. And this is the narrative, it just says that they would like to rezone this property from A1 to R1. And R1 is your most restrictive residential zone. You got to have 12,000 square foot lots, you cannot have mobile homes in there. It's all site-built homes. Each lot's going to be a minimum of 100 feet wide. And because of the 12,000 square foot, they got to be at least 100 feet wide and 120 feet deep. So they're going to be larger lots than sometimes you see in the floods that we've been developing more recently.
We're going to stricter requirements.
This will be a more strict subdivision. You can see here the plat just showing the boundaries of the property. Again, that flag shaped there, you see the Louis Fraser frontage and the Bill Carter frontage. And this is a proposal of a concept plan for how this would lay out. An entrance here off of Bill Carter Road and an entrance here off of Louis Fraser Road. You can see kind of a loop road system there. They're proposing a buffer there along the side of this property. Looks like it, based on the scale, it's probably 30 to 40 feet. And then, of course, this area right here is not, not proposed to be developed. I think it's largely wet as well. And you can see here on the, on the lots at front on Bill Carter Road, they're a little bit deeper than the rest of them. I think they intend to have a buffer there to buffer the neighbors from the road and the neighbors on the Bill Carter from the development. Zoning analysis, does a property have reasonable economic use as it's currently zoned? Yes. Does it conform, does the proposed use conform to the JLS studies? Yeah, single-family residential, does it conform? Does the proposed use conform to the county comprehensive plan? And our answer there is yes. On the road frontage, it is residential low density and the majority is designated as agricultural forestry, which does allow for a single-family residential use. Will there be an adverse effect on the value and usability of nearby properties? We said no. Is the proposed use suitable in view of nearby uses? Yes, there's mostly scattered residential in the area. Number six, will the zoning proposal create an undue burden on transportation, streets, transit, schools, utilities and public safety? Our answer there is no. The property has access to Bill Carter Road and Louis Fraser Road. Next question, will this allow short-term gain at the expense of our long-term goals? Our answer there is no. Next question, would it create a domino effect or encourage sprawl? Our answer there is yes, it could. Because if this is successful, there'll probably be demand for another subdivision in the area. Number nine, are there unique historical sites which may be adversely impacted? We haven't noted any. Number 10, is this area, is this parcel in a flood hazard area? As showed you earlier, that a portion of the property closest to Peacock Canal is in the flood zone area. Is it spot zoning and unrelated to the existing pattern of development? Our answer is no. And are there unique conditions which support approval or denial? And our answer there is that we haven't noted any. The commission heard this at their meeting in October and they recommend approval with standard conditions. Glad to answer any questions that you have.
Yeah, Jeff, go back to number nine. How do you classify a cemetery?
Could possibly be historically significant. And that, that did come up at the planning commission meeting and the developer said he would look into it. So I think that is something that will be required to do. And if they do find a historical cemetery there, historical or not, they would have to work around the cemetery.
Have that been located yet?
I spoke with the now owner and developer today. They've been in contact with the Bryant family who's owned that for a long time. They're not aware of a cemetery. They've ridden the property several times, they haven't seen a cemetery. Certainly, I think it's scheduled to be timbered here pretty soon. If one turns up, it'll, it'll be dealt with appropriately. But as of right now, they're not aware of a cemetery on the property.
Well, let me state this, I was born and raised right across from it. There is a cemetery out there. There is one. For us to locate it, but there is one out there.
Were there headstones?
There were some headstones out there, seed of trees. I remember it real well. I'm not saying I'm that old, but I do remember it. So I don't know how we wish to handle that, how we wish to handle that.
Could you have someone from that community help them find it?
When it gets cold.
We'd appreciate the help, I mean.
But like I said, there is one out there.
Thank you for that, we'll down our efforts. And I'll relay that back to the owner.
Because I remember years ago, there used to be a guy called Cap Henry. He used to fly his airplane out there and land it also. He had like a little dirt airstrip. But my main concern is the cemetery.
Our GIS doesn't have that kind of capability to pick up.
Wouldn't be able to see that. He'd come out on aerial or anything.
Is it a growth?
Because of, yeah, because of the foliage.
It was almost like a cross reference in front of where Ernest Wath, our Lou Birdie Wath, our house is at and where Tejan Well used to be at. You go straight back, you should be able to come up almost somehow never close to that point.
Would you be able to kind of point?
Give him the general direction? Could you give him the general direction?
Let's see here, where is?
About 105.
That's, okay, here's that, where that house is at right here. You should be able to come somewhere right in here and come straight up. There used to be a fish pond out there right near the road.
We've got.
What side?
On the, on the Bill Carter side, on the right side, right in front of the shop.
Somewhere over here, maybe?
Somewhere, you're probably going to be looking right in this area right here. Yeah, let me know. And if you got me a pair of good boots, I'll.
See if we can find you some boots.
Just see if we can find boots and I'll be willing to go out and see if we can locate it. But I like to give the respect to everyone deceased.
For sure, we don't, we don't want any bad juju.
Right, yeah.
And I will say that we've got a good bit of green space set up in this concept plan. This is just a concept plan. So if one is found, we can change.
Maneuver.
Around and make sure we give it its appropriate buffers and deal with it as we.
Are you planning on building this in phases or are you planning on going at the whole?
I would expect this to be a phased development as well. 300-foot temporary or 600-foot temporary cul-de-sac.
And this had been Bryant Properties, sir?
Yes, sir, I think this was part of the Bryant-Saspress properties.
You know, that's my memory is going bad and I'm a long ways from Commissioner Stevens' age. But I thought we zoned that one time for.
We did.
We did.
For a man in.
He went belly up.
Richmond Hill?
Yes.
Really? So it's already been zoned?
Right.
Okay, for.
Years ago.
I think that was the property next door that Aaron Duncan now owns. And y'all recently rezoned that back to Ag.
It was Aaron Duncan.
Next door to.
Lloyd Murray had it?
Aaron Duncan had it.
Aaron Duncan had it.
But I don't know.
I know he's got a big house in there, don't he?
Yes.
That's right, Aaron Duncan.
Well, now, on this map right here, where would, where would Aaron be right there?
Aaron's at the, at the bottom, I spoke with Mr. Duncan.
You're a long ways from the church there then. I got you.
I did speak with.
No, Aaron is going to be somewhere right in there because that's Louis Fraser coming right there. Aaron should be about right there.
That's right, so he's at the bottom of the page, that's a Timberland company here. I spoke with Mr. Duncan today, he's, he's good with the project as long as we keep this 40-foot buffer right here. He has no problems, I think he stated he shares a mile of property line almost with us and was good with it.
And the next question I got for Jeff, how many response did you get back?
We, I don't know if we had any.
Property owners.
I know, I know we had several people that came and spoke to the planning commission.
No, uh-uh. How many response, did you get any letters returned? No good address or anything like that?
We, none that we, that we have a record of.
Reason why I'm asking that question because I spoke to several of the, not all of them, but several of the adjoining property owners, adjoining property owners. And they said they never received anything. I mean, I'm just, I'm not in your office.
We do get some back from time to time, but I don't know that we got any back on this particular one. And because of the large landowners around it, I mean, Duncan would have gotten one and I guess the Bryants would have gotten one. There might have been a few neighbors directly across the street that had gotten some. But there wouldn't have been a lot of letters associated with this one because it's such a big property.
There's quite a few, probably about six or seven. Probably about six or seven. Might be more than that. But it's just strange. What does the letter look like when y'all?
One-page letter that says the owner of this property has submitted a request to rezone this property, and it gives the date of this meeting and the date of the planning commission, so you can come and...
It's basically the same template y'all sent out for...
It's generated by a computer, and we have, we use the assessor's addresses. And that's why we get, we do have a good, pretty good return rate on those, because for whatever reason, their addresses are not always deliverable, so they come back to us sometimes. But it's generated by GIS. Y'all added them on the back tonight. That's who we use to write these letters. We do put the signs up, we run the ad in the paper.
Right, yeah. I saw the signs. Yeah.
All right. Can I ask you this?
Mr. Chairman.
I've got one question, and that's it. And I know maybe Commissioner Stevens has looked at it, but this roadway is gonna be enhanced, overlaid, or widened, or forgot about. I don't know. But, I mean, where it's at right there, is it gonna mess with those front two lots you got before you get to Bill Carter? You know what I'm talking about?
Right.
Across the bridge, and it's gonna be widened right there, from what I understand, a little bit, ain't it, Joy?
Trent may be able to help me better with that.
I think the Bill Carter side, I think the Bill Carter side of it is gonna be more hampered by it than anything else.
Yeah, the bridge widening, or the bridge is going to be widened some.
Right.
At those abutment places, but it won't extend. I don't think it's gonna extend the road. They're not gonna widen the road for that one.
I know there's a wide right-of-way there before you get to Bill Carter, if you're coming, you know, from...
Because we're looking at four feet, two, what, two feet extensions on both sides?
Yeah, I mean, that would be plenty. I mean, that wouldn't probably be a big issue. I just, you know, you don't never know what the state's gonna wind up with some type of a traffic turn there, where some traffic can go straight on through and others can turn. I don't know. Just thinking. I'll be quiet about it.
All right. Do we have anyone here that lives within the two hundred feet? Commissioner Stevens, you know better than I know, boundary of the proposed project.
What was that, Chairman?
Anyone that lives within the boundary, two hundred feet boundary of there? That wanted to say something. No question? Okay. Hello?
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm kind of new to the area. I pastor at Thieves African Methodist Episcopal Church, and it appears to be there kind of at the end of a section. I think it's of Louis Fraser and...
Bill Carter.
Okay, yes. And so, will the church be affected there at that little small intersection there?
No, ma'am.
No?
No, ma'am.
Okay. All right. And then I came with some other people as well.
Oh.
Yeah, and I think that one of them may want to say something.
We'll entertain a spokesperson, who's it designated?
Yes, I'm not sure. I was not the spokesperson, but I did have that question.
Welcome to the community too.
What was her name? I need, what name?
Reverend Dr. Jonetta Prater, P-R-A-T-E-R.
Okay, thank you.
Pastor of Thieves AME Church.
Let me say this to you, Pastor. If it was actually Wharthour Road and Louis Fraser, it would have had effect on it, but it doesn't.
All right, we can't let everybody talk now, so y'all give me, you got the backup team, all right. You got a good one. I see who's coming out to shoot. Fit the big guns up front. Yes, ma'am, go ahead. Give your name first, if you will, please.
Reverend S. Diane Robertson.
S. Diane Robertson. I was getting it wrong.
Robertson.
Robertson.
First of all, giving honor to Jesus Christ, my Lord and Savior, to Commissioner Lovett and the other commissioners. I'm just gonna read because I had like a petition about forty more, forty people. And it reads, "This is a petition to stop the rezoning of Bill Carter Road from an A1 district to a R1 district. Do not make us victims of gentrification. Do not displace us in our golden but feeble years. Let us keep our homes." We are looking at five to ten years from now, what's gonna be taking place. This rezoning will allow one hundred to forty-five to one hundred and fifty new residents to be interjected into this small, closed-knit community. The current residents of Bill Carter Road are mostly low-middle-class families. They are comprised of the disabled, retired, or senior citizen. Even now, these Liberty Countyans struggle to maintain their livelihoods. They will not be financially able to afford the increase in property taxes when these houses are built and the property values increase. Addition of this many new residents will also lead to an increase in traffic and accidents. This community already has a great influx of traffic coming from other communities and areas. A proponently one hundred and fifty new homes purchased mainly by middle and upper-class persons would bring about two hundred to three hundred more vehicles on Bill Carter Road. This will lead to an increase in noise also. With this many new homes, there would be more attractive targets for criminals. Therefore, there will be an increase in crime. The removal of the trees and woods will also displace the wildlife. There is a graveyard and pond on the proposed site and one across the road from the site. Overall, the rezoning effort would take from the character and culture of this community. It would take away from the peace and quiet that the current residents now enjoy. If you, our county commissioners, find it necessary and appropriate for progress sake to okay the proposed rezoning, would you please include in the agreement a grandfather clause that will protect the current Bill Carter residents from the horrendous property taxes, which we know will increase? Would you, our commissioners, please see that a buffer be provided so we, the resident, can still have some form of privacy? We ask that you do not displace us. Do not make us a victim of gentrification, please.
Thank you all. Thank you all. Okay, have a seat. Where's the develop? Marcus, is that you? All right, let me say this while he's coming. Just FYI, the, so we can sort of talk about buffers, which we heard a previous conversation about buffers earlier. And also, a subdivision that comes in, this property is wooded now, so it's going from wooded to a proposed subdivision. Just because a subdivision comes in, doesn't mean everybody's taxes are gonna go up because of the subdivision. It's not automatic. That's generally thought that way, but it's not automatic that way. So you're protected that way. Now, it will, no doubt about it. Not just this one, but all over the county. It changes your community, you know, because you're right, you're gonna have new people who are moving in, increased traffic, all those kind of things, you're right. So we hear you, we hear you very well, but we're hearing that from everybody, where there is growth coming into a community, especially into an area that's been ruled. But it will, and we will not let, I think anybody push those people out who've been there for years and years. Not on our watch. Not on our watch, that won't happen. Now, you have new neighbor, people who'll be in there now who hadn't been in there, you're right. But to push the locals out, no, ma'am. I already did my, I went over my... Can you do it from right there? Yeah, come on.
Excuse me for saying this, but I didn't receive a letter. I've been living on that property since nineteen seventy-five. The last name is Lennon, Orsman. Nothing came to me. They had a meeting in October. I had no idea. If it wasn't for these ladies, I wouldn't have known about this meeting. I don't appreciate you jumping up on me, because I'm at peace. I live by myself. I am a sinner. I have animals. I have neighbors that have kids. Who have daughters. It makes me upset, you know. I'm scared about the traffic coming in and out. We need to walk through the other white, Louis Fraser. This old residential is like right here. You know, I'm the only one I think that's back somewhere in the back of the road. Everyone else is like right here.
Back younger.
I mean, these guys can, you know, do whatever, but me, I worry about it. Okay, because I'm here for that long. That long.
Thank you, ma'am, Mr. Johnson.
Marcus, Mr. Chairman. Marcus. I think we heard one of their concerns that I, what about the buffer?
Yes, sir. I think we're prepared to provide a buffer. Right now, we show a forty-foot buffer around the outer perimeter. Again, this is just a concept plan, but I think the developer would take that as a condition of the rezoning, to have a forty-foot perimeter buffer along the property lines. Certainly, the lots that front Bill Carter Road there, as Jeff mentioned earlier, they're pretty deep. They're over three hundred foot deep, and that was to try to provide some screening along the roadway from the houses. One other thing I do want to mention is that although this isn't R1 rezoning, which is a twelve thousand square foot lot, because these are septic tanks, they will be over half an acre apiece. So you're talking about a hundred-foot wide, two hundred and twenty-foot deep. So as developments go, whereas we're seeing a lot of PUDs with high densities and those sorts of things, this is a pretty low-density type development. It will include the buffers and some green space as well.
And just for everyone out there, it's in the making. We were going to do some work on Bill Carter Road also to make it wider. We're gonna run into just one issue probably down there by the old society hall, where that big tree's at. We don't know if we're gonna have to cut it or not. But that's gonna be an issue. Might be, but we got an engineer right here. I think he can figure it out for us. So as the chairman has already made a statement about taxes, taxes is not gonna go up.
It's going all over the country, most of the modern cities and, you know, like, I'm gonna say lower-middle-class homes and stuff. They say, no, the property tax is not going up. But I know when they put those houses that are like a hundred thousand, fifty thousand, two hundred thousand, I'm not very god, you know, I always call it tax. So I know what I'm talking about. I do know that the taxes are gonna go up. And I live on a very set budget right now. And five years from now, I don't want to worry about being displaced from my home because the taxes are so high, I can't pay.
Chairman. Can I? Let me say, let me say this, and I'll be through.
You just spoke?
I'm on a...
S. Diane Robinson.
I'm on a, I'm on a fixed income, just like most of you are down there myself. So what we do up here is going to affect me also. But let's keep in mind that that person who owns that property pays tax on it every year. And then you come to a point, you tell that person they can't do this and can't do that on it, but that person still has to pay that tax. So let's look at it both ways. And I am looking at it both ways from up here. Because I live in that community.
And remember, Mr. Roberts, there's an assessment based on the values that the state sets. So it's not just because a new subdivision comes to you, all of a sudden now your property jumps up. It doesn't work that way. Now, here's what's gonna happen, what could happen. I'm getting off point here. Someone mentioned that, oh, there's other large tracks to land that area, someone else may come in, you know, know about it. But kind of like Commissioner Stevens said, if, even if it's Donald Lovett or Justin Fray, whoever owns that property, they got a right to come in and say, this is my property, I like to build it. You know, because that's their property. But that doesn't push the local people out unless you want to leave, or you say, well, you know what? It's not the little quiet community that I knew and love. I think I'm going farther out into the country. But you have to be careful with that, because guess what?
They're coming.
They're coming. Both of us going everywhere. It's going everywhere.
They're coming.
But that property been sitting there for, oh, long.
That sign has been out there for about two years or longer.
But once again, we hear you very well. We're gonna make sure, and I'm glad to work with Marcus and his team. They listen to citizens, and they have, they are open to ensuring that everybody gets a fair shake out of it.
Mr. Chairman.
And that don't always happen.
Yes.
I'm sorry. Oh, hey there. Yeah, we can't... Yeah, and she gonna be the last one, y'all, but gotta move on. Come on. He wants you to be on the record, otherwise they can't hear you.
I'm just happy to have company.
And I live in Liberty County. I have property on Bill Carter Road. Progress is good. But let's have the truth to come out. If you didn't get a letter, it wasn't sent. Where are the letters? All of these people sitting over here with property nearing that site, and they're saying they didn't get a letter. And that's, that's all I want to say. You didn't, we didn't get a letter.
Mr. Richardson, will you explain that process again? I heard, but let's say it again for the matter of record, how that works.
When we, we're required by ordinance to put up a sign on the property and run an ad in the paper and send a letter to every, every property owner within two hundred feet of this property line for this subdivision. So that includes the road. I don't know where some of the folks live, but if your, if your property is within two hundred feet of this property line on Bill Carter Road, or really, it's probably the right-of-way of Bill Carter Road or the right-of-way of Louis Fraser. If you're, if you're within two hundred feet of this property, you got a letter, or you should have gotten a letter from the GIS that we automatically generate. So I can, I can look at that and tell you, I can report back to you who got a letter if you want me to do it.
It won't be everybody in this room, it'll be only those that live within two hundred feet. And, and you know, you've been here before, you might want to, I'm not sure why her address would be... Yeah.
And it would be deed of record too. So if it's an estate, necessarily, if it's not deeded to a specific person, it might be on the heir of the estate.
Okay, can you say that aloud?
Yes, sir. So it's only to those people, it is sent to those people who are owners of deed of record. So if they're living on family estate, which I'm not sure, but if they're on estate property and they're not the owner of deed of record, they would not, not heir to the estate. Whoever gets the property tax bill would actually get it. And it could have been everybody. I'm not saying, but that is something that we run into sometimes. Some people that literally live there and have lived there for years and years and years, but they don't actually own it.
They're named out on the deed.
Jeff, Mr. Chairman, to, this is, this seems like to be a real big issue. How can, is there any, another way that these letters can be sent certified mail from now on? But then again, if the person who that property name is in, if you send it certified mail, that person may be deceased. So...
As if it's heirs' property.
If it's heirs' property.
I mean, trust me, I, you know, I'm kind of a progressive type of guy, and I'm just wanna be honest with you. I barely check my mail. Is that, in 2022, is that the most efficient way of contacting individuals?
We use multiple ways now when we're doing our planning efforts. We do social media and stuff, but that's what the ordinance says. It says you will mail it and...
Hey, I understand ordinances. We have some ordinances, probably, if we look at the county, we probably have some ordinances that we implemented back in eighteen fifty.
They're older than you.
I guarantee they're older than me. Get close to you.
Yeah, see the yellow signs.
And that got the date and place.
And I, and I get it. And I'm not saying, even those signs, we haven't upgraded those signs in how long? I mean, they're really, if, if you don't know, and I guess I look at it from a perspective of me being in government and understanding development. I look for those signs, because I'm in government. What I'm saying is, due to average citizen truly, is that something recognizable for them? Those are the type of questions that we need to start asking. Because we're in it all the time, we understand what to look for. Same thing with when I requested that we upgrade our Splot signs. They were just green and white for thirty years. But now, when you see a Splot sign, you understand it's Splot. So it's the same thing. It's just certain things that we've been doing for a while, and I'm not saying that it was right or wrong, but I think it's time to, to be a little bit more progressive and look at it more alternatives, measures to, to start doing things. That's the only thing.
Let's bring this in, African.
All the questions, Mr. Chairman.
I got a, I see, who's in the backseat just dancing? I got a, I, I see, who's in the backseat just, just dancing in the.
Ms. Williams, I'm sorry.
Come to the mic.
Come up here, please, I'm sorry. The microphone won't pick you up.
She's the last one, y'all. In the back of Commissioner Stevens here.
And I want to ask Commissioner Stevens a question. You know where Nathan Trailer is, right? My niece owns an acre of land right across from that trailer. Does this development affect that area?
I called her, just like I called Miss Laura, Miss Lauren, uh, called Miss Sandra Simmons.
You call who, my niece? Because she hadn't heard nothing.
I got a, I can show it to you in a text message also.
Jennifer Newsom?
Huh?
Jennifer Newsom?
No, that one doesn't.
Because she owns that property.
Not, not Jennifer, I talked to Paulette.
No, no, this property is owned by Jennifer Newsom. She's in Virginia. And I handled it for her, so I know, I didn't get a letter, and when I spoke with her, she didn't get one. And it's nothing on the property, it's no house. She just had the land there that we pay taxes every year for, so.
There's two pieces of property, I just looked at, one of them was Nathan, where when that road curve, when they came through with that road, it split Nathan property.
Yeah, but Jennifer.
Jennifer Newton, and I just seen that name.
My acre is on, not where Nathan.
It's a Harry, Harry Newsom.
Yeah, Jennifer, Harry Newsom.
And I just saw that one, okay? I just looked it up again, I just saw that one. But, most of them down there, I tried to contact them myself.
Is it?
And that's one of them, I did not know that you were connected, okay? Because you my next door neighbor, okay?
And my classmate.
My classmate.
Yeah, so.
So, is it, it will affect that property, or?
It will come up to the back of, and that's where the buffer is gonna come, which is a forty-foot buffer is gonna come at. It's right at, hold on just a minute, let me get mine together. Actually, you're gonna be right here. Those two pieces of property, right there. Yeah, so that's where the buffer is, your forty-foot buffer is gonna come in on all of the properties. So, it's gonna give them where that they won't be looking at it. The forty-foot buffer, yeah. That's, that's right, almost in front of the cemetery. Right, yeah.
All right. Thank you, ma'am.
You, Mr. Chairman.
Mrs. Stevens, let's move on.
Mr. Chair. We done beat this horse. Horse is hungry. We go ahead and approve the rezoning on this property with the stipulation of the forty-foot buffer to protect all property.
And, and y'all gonna try to identify the cemetery?
And we will do our utmost to identify the cemetery.
I heard it different than that. I heard him say he would go in there and find a cemetery. And I think you need to put that in the minutes.
Long as it's cold. He said, long as it's cold.
Long as it's cold. Gotta be sometime.
Second.
Second, all right. I think this discussion has been full. All in favor, show of hands, please. Any opposition?
Our next bit of progress here is.
Go back into a turn.
Okay, we out of that? All right, chair, take a motion.
Second.
All in favors, all right, back in regular session.
This is a, a gateway approval. As you are aware, Liberty County has a gateway overlay for all the property on Highway eighty-four, going from the downtown Midway out to ninety-five, and then it extends on Allen's Highway all the way to the coast, Sunbury and to, to Cronell's Island. So, this area, this next property is, I guess, closer between the entrance of Trayport and I ninety-five. It's a location, a proposed location for a new Parkers, and because it's in the gateway overlay district, it requires that both you and the city of Midway to approve the, the appearance of the project. Midway, it's on Midway's agenda, Midway's mayor and council's agenda on November the fourteenth for conditional use approval and gateway approval. It's only on your agenda tonight to approve the gateway approval, because the property is located within the city of Midway, and they require conditional approval. On the part that's on in Liberty County is B two already, and you don't require conditional approval, it's allowed by law. Anyway, I'll just go and show you, this is where the, the property is. You can see the exit seventy-six, Allen's Highway. It's the first property, as you cross over the exit seventy-six and going out Allen's Highway, is this property right here. The blue area is the area that's inside of Midway. You might recall, a few months ago, you all approved a development agreement to allow this developer here to move Dorchester Village Road further out to the east. So, this property, the, the store, the store building, the Parker's building, is actually proposed to be located right on top of that road bed, the existing dirt road. That's just for your reference, that's, that's where the, the store will actually be. So, the road will actually be moving in, this road will, the Parker's will front on the new relocated road over here. So, going to the next slide, this is just the, again, we're just looking at the appearance of the building, but this is how the, the front and rear elevation of the Parker's, you can see the, the front, it'll be facing Allen's Highway, so this will be what you see, or the store building that you'll see from the highway. There'll actually be a fuel canopy in between the store and the building, so I'll, I'll show you that in a moment. And then, then of course, this is the rear, this is what's gonna be facing the, the down Dorchester Village Road. And this is the right elevation, and this is the side that'll be facing Interstate ninety-five, and then the left elevation is the one that's facing the coast. And this is the fuel canopy, there are eight different fuel islands here. This will be in between the building and Allen's Highway, you'll be, you'll be seeing that. You can see the Parker's logo on there, the green, the familiar green and blue there. And then you can see, you can see what it looks like from the side. Materials are, there's gonna be a gray aluminum paint, and then also a, another color of gray here. And then, the bricks on the building, it's gonna be an all-brick building, it's gonna be sort of a sandy-colored brick, almost, almost similar to the Liberty County Public Library, that, that, that shade of, of brick. This is the diesel canopy, there will be five diesel pumps on there as well. I'm gonna show you the overall site layout, just to show you how that looks on the, from the air. But, there will be five of these diesel islands to the rear of the pump. All, again, all the same color, the same tan-colored brick and the gray colors in the paint. And then, there'll be an enclosed garbage container, that'll be brick as well to match the building, and there'll be metal panels on the front of it. And, I think this other, other views of the trash compound, same color scheme. This is the overall site layout. This property will have a right-in, right-out off of Allen's Highway, right here. This is the old road bed, as you can see there. You can see that building sitting right in the middle of the road bed. The eight canopy island there for the, for the automobiles will be sitting between the store and Allen's Highway. The, the five diesel bays are in the rear of the store, so trucks would come around, come through here, and then exit out one of these two, one of these two driveways here onto the new road, and then they'd exit back onto Allen's Highway. You can see here, we got the, the tank, fuel tank area here, parking for the store here, here, and on this side over here. And then detention, of course, in the rear. So, it'll have one right-in, right-out off of, directly off of Allen's Highway. And then over here on the new road, there'll be an entrance here and an entrance back in the rear. So, there'll be two, two, there'll be, be three total entrances, but full access will be off of the new road. Gateway Board met last Wednesday, and they recommended approval of the design concept. So, I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. Engineer David Smith from Kimbley Horn is also here, he can answer more specific questions if you have.
They gonna serve chicken?
Grill?
Explain to me the access, he says right-in and right-out.
And we, we put this on, we put this, showed this on an overlay, just so you could see the aerial, the ground underneath it, and to illustrate where the, the building is going. But, back here, but like the exits back here.
Coming from ninety-five.
There'll be a right-in here and a right-out. There won't be a full access there, because, and he's got plans for, as you saw last week, we get, got plans for.
How, how do I get back to the interchange?
You're backside.
You're going back to the interchange, you'll come out one of these two exits, there's an exit there and exit there, and get onto the new road. Come down here and make a left.
Oh, I gotta come back.
Come back around.
And then, is that a U-turn?
It will be a, this would be, this would be a full access road here, but you.
Okay.
Trent, I'm trying to follow, is that part? Is that part of the new improvements we're gonna make? Okay.
The lining up in that road is, is part of, was part of that first phase, those new improvements. Now, I mean, there won't be any four-laning in that section.
Yeah.
Other than what's there right now. And no signal there right now.
Yeah.
So, the new road, this is the new Dorchester Village Road.
All right.
The median break will be right here.
Right in there.
There's some old line work that I had given them some time ago. We, they decided to move Dorchester Village Road. That line work, that is right here. So, this right-in, right-out, it, it functions well with this roadway right here. So, this is in keeping with our Allen's Highway safety plan. The only thing that we don't have is, you know, we're not building the four lanes right now, so they've got to make safety improvements that work with what's there now.
That's what, that's what I'm waiting to hear somebody say.
So, what'll end up happening, you know, when we get ready to do the widening, we'll have to fix it. But, they've got to build it to safety standards now, based on what's there. So, you know, they can't build way back here with our road going right there.
That's on Concess More, right?
Yeah, I've already got it incorporated into the bank.
How, how will that integrate with truck traffic coming out of Trayport East?
It'll be fine.
Yeah.
Yes, sir, this, this, uh, one of the bigger trip generators are these convenience stores, the fuel stations and the truck stops, they, they do generate a lot of traffic. So, this is one thing that'll generate a future signal or something right there. That'll help. Yes, this, this will integrate, there's a lot of truck traffic, this will be coming this way. And the way the lanes are set up in here, in the new alignment, they should be fine.
Should be fine, all right.
This, this road has really wide lanes to.
Joey, you know, I got a lot of folk depending on that. You know, too.
I do know.
Which way is, I mean, is that a divider there at the top? And which way's Midway, and which way's?
Maybe it's to your left.
Is this way and the coast is that way?
Okay, so, where is the existing?
Road.
McDonald's at down there now.
For the to your left.
Across the bridge.
Across.
Okay, so you're, um, where that's at, was there a bar pit there?
No.
I mean, if you coming across, show me where the overpass is, is at right now.
I'm gonna go back and show you on the aerial photograph.
Well, no. Nice-looking building.
This is, this is where the.
Right.
First, it'd be the first right.
And that wasn't never a bar pit?
No.
Dorchester Village Road right there.
There was never one there.
The dirt Dorchester Village Road right there. See, built on top of the road bed, didn't you say?
There was a bar pit on the other side of the road over there.
I know there was one on the other side of the road, but I thought on that side there, there was a, a bar pit.
No, actually, that's where the old Dorchester Village Road used to come across at right there.
Sandy road.
Yeah, I mean, it come all the way from Charlie Butler.
Charlie Butler.
Of across there, but I thought that was, there was a hot, uh, bar pit there, but y'all said it wasn't.
No, you.
Right there on the upper side there.
Yeah, on the north side. The north entrance side.
All right, it's a nice-looking project.
Ain't no luck of Parker's, they got some good chicken around.
Called Parker's Kitchen, I called it a Parker's Grill, but it's called Parker's Kitchen.
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 Just to be, just to be clear, Mr. Chairman, I, I said that there was a median there, there's no median. This, this new road will have a break, as Trent just said.
Break, okay.
There won't be any U-turns going. Make a left and come to the interstate.
Okay, all right. My question once again is, so, that merging truck traffic, that's gonna work with them coming out of that Dorchester Village, the, the road, okay?
And I just have one question, so is it gonna be like the kitchen at these Parker's, or the kitchen like the one downtown Savannah? See, he, he knows there's a difference, right? Yeah.
David Smith with Kimbley Horn, so I can't, I can't get real down to the weeds in it, because I don't really know what goes inside the building. Before I've talked to the developer, it's gonna be a Parker's Kitchen, it's not gonna be a fancy Parker's, if that's what you're talking about.
You know which one I'm talking about.
Love that one, but no, it's gonna be very similar to what you see around here, where typical fare, fried food, and potatoes and stuff like that.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
I like the concept.
I like it too, I just, are we installing lights down there? Mr. Chairman?
He said not, doesn't qualify yet, doesn't meet the criteria yet. As, as the traffic counts in, increase, Trent says it's on the way.
All right, let's do it.
All right, uh, is it you two?
Yeah, me again.
You building everything.
Busy tonight. I make a motion that we accept the plans presented.
Second?
Second.
For discussion, my question, timeline, what's we look, what we looking at for timeline, do you know? Just curious.
As I understand it, that three through Dorchester Village Road is supposed to be starting to work sometime February, maybe completed later on, so we would have to follow after that, because we need that connection there.
Next year, okay.
Are they gonna have that road paved by, paved by them?
I can't really speak to what schedule it's gonna be, but we're shortly thereafter.
Whenever they're done, you'll start.
That's right.
All right, all in favor, show of hands, please. Thank you.
Chairman, I would, I would like to introduce our new planner, Maggie Wright, if you'll raise your hand.
Good, Maggie.
We just, Maggie just started with us last month, she's a graduate of Georgia Southern, and.
Go Eagles. Go Eagles.
Everyone looks happy.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trent, what do you have to add to what's been presented? Thank you all, Jeff, you and your staff.
Let's go, Trent, I'll, I'll think y'all like baseball, but the war series on. Okay.
I'll try.
As y'all let me go.
Trent short. Need Trent short.
Okay, so, the twenty-three Elmeg, I'll hit that first. We had the letter out that, the projects we're putting in for Commissioner Stevens, we're gonna put, put in for Bill Carter Road. For Commissioner Fraser, we're gonna do Elm Street and Windhaven out of the three sidewalks that we talked about, and that will change the overall budget. Commissioner Thiff, we're, Riff, we're putting in for Mary Todd Road.
Yes.
Commissioner Jones, we're putting in for Limerick Road, the widening. And for Gary, Mr. Gillard, we're doing a thing toward Davis and Select. And then Commissioner Walden and I talked, and he is deferring his election on this one, so it gets divided five ways.
Well, let me just say this, I, I don't have anything right now, and I have asked Joy to, we're looking at what's in the city of Hinesville. It don't look like they're spending any kind of money, they got plenty of money right now. So, I do have Flemington area, I wanna be looking at that, something to do. And then also, it looks like we may need, you know, some help in Commissioner Stevens' area down there with the, with the middle park, with fencing, or whatever else. So, we'll, one way or another, we're gonna spend it, don't, don't feel like I ain't gonna spend it.
It's gonna get spent.
I'll always have that olive branch out there to help.
And you have done a good job at it.
Trent, don't wanna hold up.
Yes, sir, thank you very much.
I'm not sure where that, Commissioner Walden reminded me, that whole thing, the idea about the water smart and realignment is, but, you know what I mean?
Oh, uh.
It's out there.
It, it is out there, there's an estimate on it.
Is that missed on?
Flemington's got an estimate on it.
That would be a great project, too.
Yeah, it will be.
I'm not gonna be able to fund it.
No.
I mean, I, I.
That's gonna be a great project.
Yeah. Gotcha.
Okay, so I guess tonight, the middle park is probably the hardest thing for me to ask for, because I hate having to ask for change.
Oh, boy.
So, we just wanna make a motion in a second for the Elmeg.
Oh, sorry. Yeah, okay.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Like a, like a, all in favor?
Guess you tell I'm nervous about the middle park. So, you know, this, this project's been plagued with delay, plagued with delays and, and a lot of things that's going along. Finally got some progress going, and we ran into a bunch of the soils, and with the rain that was happening, it just really kinda, didn't have enough in our contract to cover what we experienced out there. So, we did have to back off, and we did find that we did. So we did have to back off and we did find that we did have enough money budgeted in drainage to take care of this change order. So what we'd like to do is, we're trying to take some credits for some things that we think we cannot use to finish this job. And then getting, I've got enough dirt that I think will cover the whole thing. Hopefully, I won't have to use all of this money, but it is a change order for a total change of nine-nine-thousand-nine-hundred-and-forty-five dollars and seventy-three cents, an increase to the contract, which bring the contract to one million twenty-three thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents. So I guess I can answer questions or I can go deeper into explaining what we're finding or...
No, let's go deeper and get in the finish.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Let's get it over with.
Yeah, what do we need?
Chair, need a motion on that? Yeah, I'm like, Commissioner Gill, what do we need? Originally contract prices nine-twenty-three-nine-one point? Forty-five. You doing the math, sir?
Yes, sir. The original contract was nine-hundred-and-twenty-three thousand seven-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars and forty-five cents. New project will be, not new, but the new project, will be one million twenty-three thousand seven-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars and twenty-eight cents.
Twenty-eight cents.
Oh, basically, a hundred grand. Yeah. Ninety-nine thousand nine-hundred-and-forty-five dollars seventy-three cent. See, I've been hanging around with Marcus lately, with his math skills, and I just picked it up.
Have you all identified the source of that?
Yes, sir, we've got the source and we've got the funds.
Okay, all right. Trent, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, I wanna say something about this, man. I'm not here to beat anybody up, I just wanna make sure everybody's fully aware and Trent is a friend, but we need to get something, decide what we wanna do. If the money's there, let's do it. Now, nobody could look out there and see anything that was used in PVC or asphalt was gonna be such a problem. Nobody knew about the dirt, but we've got to have something corded, Trent, from now on, then we gonna have to have it corded and, and look at it. I know it's totally different when you're working for a private individual than it is when you're working for a government agency like we have right here. Joseph Miller was a friend of my father's and he did a lot for the county. The park is named Miller Park and I wanted to spend some money because me and Commissioner Stevens had talked about it, but whatever we've got to try to do, because I've seen the contractor have to leave there with nothing to work with and drive to Gum Branch, to Commissioner Thrift's district and work, and I mean, that ain't in there. All we're doing is paying for material. We're not capturing what the man has spent running up and down the highway trying to figure it out. So whatever we've got to try to do to make this right, because I don't want us to be sitting somewhere with mud on our face saying, well, you don't wanna work for that bunch because they're gonna hold your feet to the fire and you're not gonna have no leeway. But again, if we've got a project, whosever it is, I've looked at some with Commissioner Gillard, I've looked at some with Commissioner Stevens, when he was doing a road, you know, in McIntosh Lake Road, and we talked about it, but if it's gotta be done, let's get together, let's decide the sales tax money's there and let's go forward with it. But to engineer a job today, thinking that in a hundred and sixty days, we're gonna generate enough sales tax money and we don't even look at what the cost of material is then. So I'm just saying, we've got some room to grow and we've got some, some room to improve, so I'm gonna say that and be done with it.
I heard the gentleman say the funding has been identified. Administrators confirming that. All right, Chair and take the motion then for the... Chair, I make that motion that we approved this... Change order. Change order on Miller Park. And then Mount specified.
Second.
Second, we approve the change order, the Mount specified here. The Mount specified. All in favor of us, show of hands, please, get this project...
And I'll talk about one other thing on the Gum Branch, Saw West Convenience Center Joey and I talked about this morning, real quickly.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I was just, thought you were telling me bye. Amen, I agree.
Sir.
Thank you.
We're ready to get her done. Yes, sir. One thing we found out on the Friday, the contractor on the Gum Branch Saw West Convenience Center, he has all his minority business taken care of as far as his requirement, has a woman business that's three percent. He was using mobile concrete as his woman-owned business for, to meet that requirement. He called for concrete on the job and he's getting ready to start pouring these retaining walls, which are in the critical path to get this job complete, and they told him it was gonna be at least three weeks before he could get any concrete. So, you know, right now, he's on target, his scheduled to complete is December twenty-second and he's on target to complete by December twenty-second. But if he's gonna be running into issues getting the concrete, that's gonna throw him into a delay. So, you know, Joey and I were discussing, well, how do you handle the woman-owned business percentages? And there's not that many other options out there. So right now, just kinda throwing it up for discussions, this, you know, go ahead and let him use a different concrete supplier, knowing that he won't meet the woman-owned business requirement, or do we say, hey, listen, you gotta wait and we're gonna give you a contract extension to let you wait? Those are kinda my two spots right now to help me...
But Trent, he can get it now, or we can wait for, let's say, three weeks and then if, if three weeks come and it's, still can't get it, so the wait is, could be even longer, a minimum of three or God knows how long, but you could get it right this minute. But that's pretty simple.
That's simple with me, if he can go on with it.
Had good faith in the beginning.
He tried.
Trying, that's...
I felt the same way, but I didn't want to, just to see, wanted to make sure that we were getting...
Appreciate it.
I wanted twelve Paul Beres, my wife, she's not gonna let me have one. I ain't even gonna be able to get any, I have to hire them ahead of time.
Make sure you get six.
Down to eleven now, 'cause my back hurts.
Make sure you get six. Take that cup you got over there.
We're gonna go ahead and tell them, see if you can get it on any...
I would make that motion, I mean, I don't know, I would say, we've already got a contract...
It doesn't require a motion.
I don't really think it requires a motion.
There's more, there's... Do the right thing, that's all.
I mean, Mr. Sheffield said it, get it...
I appreciate you bringing that to us, though, Trent. But I guess my question is, why, why is it that another business, is it just because they're buying more?
Bit, right now, that could be some Commissioner Walden, concrete, now concrete companies are apportioning loads to folks. And asphalt companies are getting apportionment of rock and the larger the company, the more business you did with it, you're getting a first apportionment. And so some of the smaller companies, even like this one, are probably not getting the same apportionment and definitely aren't getting the same response for material.
Yeah, that's, that's kinda bad on both ends. Cause I, I, you know, that's, I don't know, man, I guess I'm, I just got a heart for small businesses, maybe because I'm, I'm one of them, too. I understand, you know, you're getting caught and that, that's why it's so difficult for them to grow, then it's, then it's difficult for them to be able to get the participation with the minority businesses, from the bonding, it's, it's just a snowfall effect. So I know we're getting it done and, I mean, we're, we're doing the right thing, it's on the back end, that, that's just, that's just terrible.
We're not changing our procedure, we're just modifying this one because of the...
Yes.
Right, absolutely, yeah.
No, I mean, you know, we gonna always try to, try to do that.
Do the right thing, yeah.
I mean, in, in that case, it just sounds like it's the devil, you know, I mean, if you do business with them, they gonna call you back.
Yeah, yeah.
I mean, it's sad, but, but we gave, we gave it a shot.
Thank you. All right. Announcements, or?
Don't have any.
I have a question, Joey. Joey, Ms. Chairman, if you don't mind, we got some applications for board appointments with, and our spokesman for the committee, at the next meeting, which would be the seventeenth, we can have that on agenda, I'll, I'll meet with Commissioner Jones and Commissioner Walden and if you could put it on agenda, we'll have, we'll be ready to make those...
Y'all not ready tonight?
We just, we just got this today, I didn't even...
Oh, that's, that's plenty of time for y'all.
Well, on second thought...
Mid-muff, mid-muff. Mr. Chairman? Mr. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Just got the salary study, when are we going to look at that? And you've heard, you've heard people talk about diesel fuel being short, or is the county looking at that issue?
Yes, we don't have any problem with supply on diesel fuel at this point, because we do purchase so much of it. As far as the salary thing goes, I mean, Mr. Mooney and I can talk about that, we can go ahead and bring it to you, none of that is included in the budget.
Right.
Or the millage, it was just approved, but we can be prepared to bring that to you. I'd say no later than the first part of December.
Okay. And another thing, would you help, could you, don't know what, I'll say this to the board, if you get, a citizen wants to build a house and they need a driveway pipe on the state route, I've got two people, two families holed up right now, Mr. Wells cannot locate that safety end, and that's another issue that we've been talking about, locating of supplies. So they've been waiting now almost a month to get those two end caps and the state won't let Mr. Wells put in the, the rest of it, 'cause it'd be a blunt end. So I'm just mentioning that to the board, so if you run into that problem, yeah.
That's required now, right? All for good order?
I just think that we dust off that, that plan for economic development. Thank you.
Chair and take a motion to adjourn. A move. Second, all in favor? Thank you.